I was talking about my mom who's sixty-nine and who we're believing to be completely delivered physically. And yet, at sixty-nine, it still is a little more involved in getting out of bed and moving around than for those of us that are twenty-six, thirty-six, forty-six, fifty-six, eighty-six. Wait, okay, you get the point. Right? Sure, so thankful. You know, let's practice finding things to be thankful for. There are so many. God's faithfulness, for one. His grace, his mercy, that you woke up this morning, you opened your eyes, you can see, you can hear, you can think. You have people that love you, besides God that loves you, people that love you and that care about you. You have a family, you have a household. You're clean and sober. Boy, oh boy, just thankful. You have a child or you have a parent. Cause those attitudes, the adversary works on those. The greatest, the two greatest life suckers are, for the believer, are ignorance of your sonship rights, that you're righteous, sanctified, justified, redeemed, and have the ministry of reconciliation. I don't care which order you put them in, as long as you say it, cause you have it in your mind, see? And when you're ignorant of those sonship rights, you're gonna end up in condemnation. And that's an attitude, and that attitude leads you down to where you get hard-hearted, lustful. You're, because of your condemnation, you don't have the things that you could have because when you are condemned, you cannot believe the simple promises of God's word, remember? The chapter, "You Are Righteous Now," which Anthos so beautifully shared and taught last night. Fellowship. Page seventy-three, the last paragraph. So long as man's heart, his innermost being is condemning or accusing him for any reason, he cannot get answers to prayer because he does not have confidence in God. But then you stop getting answers to prayer, and now you get lustful. You're not getting the things, so you start looking over there and going, boy, what I really need is, you know, and you, you start wanting all this stuff beyond what you need, and you're not believing God to get it anymore, cause you can't, cause you're condemned. Then you see, yeah. Next thing, unforgiving. You can't forgive somebody else. Why? Because you can't forgive yourself. Remember? Love your neighbor as yourself, the same thing works the other direction. People can be so mean to other people, why? They're mean to themselves. They wanna, you know, not give to other people, they won't give to themselves. They'll hoard, but not even enjoy what they're hoarding. Oh, good Lord, how could we not forgive ourselves? Do you know something more than God knows about you? Is there some detail God overlooked? It says his understanding is infinite. What did he miss about you? What is it that he doesn't know, that you know, that won't allow you to forgive yourself? Did you do something so bad that his grace can't cover it? Was it that wrong? Sure, it may have been disgusting. It may have been reprehensible. Something that you just do not wanna share with anyone else. Something that you don't even wanna share with yourself. You start to move toward it, and it's too painful to even face. And yet, God forgave you. And when God forgave you, he forgot it. And the word says, "He buried it as deep as the deepest sea." He remembers it no more, he puts it as far away as the east is from the west, and east and west never meet. Well, if God, who knows everything about everyone, could forgive you, can you forgive yourself? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
If I hear a yes from everybody?
Yes.
Anthos talking about.
Say a yes from everyone.
Well, if you, if you ask a question, then yes, give a yes, not a, not a, the sales technique. Wow. Now, unthankful. Just natural progression. You're unforgiving, you won't forgive yourself, you won't forgive others, so you can't be thankful, cause you're unforgiven. Unforgiven and unforgiving, you're un, therefore, you're unthankful. You can't be thankful for being forgiven if you don't believe you're forgiven, if you won't forgive yourself. And you're lustful, so you're not thankful because you're not believing in God, and he provides supplies to need, and you're thinking, oh, thank you, Father. Instead, it's you're conniving, finagling, lying, cheating, deceiving, to get stuff you want. You can't believe that God would just give it to you. Why wouldn't God give it to you? Doesn't he love you?
Yeah.
Why wouldn't he give it to you? If it's available, word of God's will, God writes it, why wouldn't he give it to you? Is he holding something against you? He says he's not. But when you're condemning yourself, you can't just believe so simply and so beautifully that your father would give it to you. So you go to man. Like man gives a crap about you. Without the love of God, the only way man gives something to you is if man wants something in return. Don't you get it? It's always like that. It has to come from God if it's gonna be clean, pure, no strings attached. Back to the blue. The blue, huh? What's Chuck's mom's, Chuck's mom really likes this one. Puppies. Get a copy. For nineteen ninety-five. And your mom gave up her twenty bucks for Alice Joker. I don't know how much it costs to make a copy. But I appreciate her love and that. Great. You can get burgers with the rest. Have you, how have you mentally, first page eight. How have you mentally pictured yourself for the past week, month, year, ten years? Woo, ten years. The picture that you carry of yourself with clearness and with concern is what you are. This law works for positive and negative thinking alike. So what we were talking about yesterday is get a clear, positive image of yourself in your mind. If you have to get, some of you know, I did a little picture book. I don't know where it is now. But it was like on these notebooks, and I took pictures. You got one too? All right, beautiful, let's see. Cool. And I had, I had a picture of a car there, which I got. That gold Cadillac, actually, years ago, had been a picture, believe it or not. Oh, I had, I had the picture of the, okay, there you got some pictures of cars, there you go. Yeah. Okay, I had pic, I had pictures of clothes. Okay. I saw this, saw this guy in a magazine, and I thought, man, that guy looks sharp. It was a classic, blue blazer with the tan slacks, that's a classic kind of look. You know, white shirt with a circuit tie, it's kind of the club, the yacht club type of look. And I thought, that is cool. So I pictured that, sure enough, one day I had it.
That's a classic look.
Yeah. And you've seen me in that classic look with that blue blazer. Custom tailored, I might add. Why? Because my God is big, and so is yours. It's the same God. Anyway, a positive, clear picture, what you can also do, and I used to do, is if I had something that I, I needed done, if I had a bill or something like that, I'd make a copy and write "paid" across it. And then I hold up to the mirror like this, and look in the mirror and go, I'm, what I'm doing now is I'm acting like I'm holding up a piece of paper and smiling really big and looking in the mirror and going, hey! I did that, I did it day after day. Continuing, see? Every day, back to the mirror, every day, every day, every day. To get that image in my mind of that bill paid and myself excited about it. And when it finally happened, it didn't really take that long, when it happened, I just went to the mirror and did that just to do it, because I had done it so many times, I had already, that, that image became reality in my mind. So I didn't even need to do that, I mean, it was just, it was like a flow, a normal flow at by that point. These things that I share with you along these lines, someone share with me, you can do them and they work because they fit with the law of believing. You're getting a picture, you've got that camera picture of yourself. Even better than just, I didn't know this then, but even better if just a picture of a car, or a picture of a house, is a picture of you in the car. So get someone to take a little snapshot of you like this, you know, or with the computers these days, you could just take your head and stick it like in the, in the driver's seat of the car or something. I don't know, could be kinda wacky. But get a positive, clear picture of your freed self. How have you mentally pictured yourself for the past week, month, year, ten years? The picture that you carry of yourself with clearness and concern is what you are, guess what? The way you are today is what you pictured. You did it. Not God, not the devil, but you allow that kind of picture to stay in your mind until you're where you are today, positive or negative. This law works for positive and negative thinking alike, understand? So now, we can put a different picture. We can sketch on the canvas of our minds, the kind of person we wanna be, and in due time, we'll become that person. So if you wanna really teach the word and be just this awesome person that teaches the word, picture that in your mind, see yourself teaching the word to hundred, five, ten, two, whatever, hundred thousand, billions of people. If you wanna minister healing, picture yourself ministering healing, ministering healing. If you wanna just be sharing the word with people and loving them and helping them get delivered with the love of God, picture yourself sharing the word with people and helping them get delivered with the love of God. Do it, and keep that picture in your mind until it comes to pass. Most people believe that in order to gain the spiritual heights in life, where they can tap the resources of God, it is necessary to strain and strive and struggle. They think that gaining spiritual results is like an air hammer. The harder one presses the hammer, the quicker he gets the job done. However, this is not the case. When we have stress and strain, we tie ourselves into knots. That's what happened to Don. We will never get out of our prisons that way. It's wonderful, we'll see, we'll laugh. Later on in the class, you'll see why. Just the opposite occurs. We bring more and more frustration to ourselves. Wow, that sounds close to condemnation, remember that? Righteousness is your God-given ability to stand before, to stand in the presence of God without a sense of sin, guilt, condemnation, frustration, shortcomings, inferiority, all of that. We don't go to God with an inferiority complex, oh, God, please, nope, we look God right in the eye, and we go, hey, Father, thanks for taking care of. We don't go to God all frustrated. We're talking about God here, what would frustrate God? Well, God, I have this problem, and it's really frustrating me, can you handle it? Like, yeah. Like, easy. Like, handled it, be thankful, kid. It is not stress and strain, but believing and acting on the word that bring release. I remember whining to God once. Well, this particular time I remember. I'm sure I've whined more than. Okay, I've been Jewish, all right? Take no offense if you're a Jewish person listening to this. It's just my shtick. We had moved from this big six-bedroom house with four baths and a swimming pool and a tennis court, and we moved quickly into another house that we bought and did a deal. And so we move into this house, and after we've moved in, the deal goes sour. We're in the house with our boxes and our furniture and our everything, and we're in the house, and the deal goes sour. The lady changed some terms in the deal, and they were not acceptable, and so she says, well, if you don't like it, then just get out. You've got, you found this place in two weeks. You'll find the next one in two weeks, you know, when can you be out? So I got on the phone, I said, I am not moving in two weeks. I am not moving. And so she says, she got, she got this attitude where she started calling me pal. Or honey, huh, some, some, hun, listen, hun, blah, 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 and just got all sapphire on me, you know? And started shaking her head, I could feel the phone shake, cause her head was shaking, I was talking on the phone. So we fought, and we stayed in there a lot longer than two weeks, but uh, because of how God came through, but I remember being in there and going, God, you know, why me, why am I going through, I remember walking down one of the halls going, why am I going through this? This is, and I'm, you know, starting to whine a little bit, and he goes, just believe. I'm like, oh, yeah. And that's phenomena, cause he doesn't have to tell me to believe, it's already in his word. If God tells you something by revelation that's already in his word, it's phenomena. Not gonna happen to everybody, not gonna happen all the time, don't expect it all the time. Expect to read what he says and believe that. But for me, this particular time, he did that. And it was like, duh, yeah, that's how it works. So what? You know, you're, you're here, you're in that situation, so what? It's not about why am I in this, it's about how do I get the H out of it? You believe your way out. That's how it works. Doesn't make any difference, at that point, you're in it, get out of it. How? Believe. So we got together, we decided what we wanted in the house. I wanted hunter green carpet, we wanted wide tiles, we wanted high ceilings. I should have believed longer, cause I wanted a swimming pool, but I guess I didn't want it that bad. The only thing I missed in this house is a swimming pool. Next one. Yeah, the motorboat, I'm making a swimming pool. I wanna, I wanna pool in it.
So I have to clean it?
Oh.
Got hot tub on the trailer.
There you go. Maybe we'll stick a pool in the trailer. There you go, you see, that's it, I wanna pool. But you got it, it's just, it's not stress and strain and whining, when you find yourself in that kind of whine, frustration mode, oh, get out of it, it's, it doesn't, it's wasting time. It's like you're in front of your father who owns everything. Is the God that created the heavens and the earth, loves you totally, I mean, talk about having someone's attention. You have the attention, the undivided, rapt attention, just that look at you like that with that wonder in his eyes kinda thing of God Almighty, and you're frustrated? Duh, that's kinda, that's really stupid. But we've been really stupid sometimes, right? Because. Do you wanna be miserable?
No.
No.
No. Well, if you wanna be miserable, look within. You wanna be distracted and discouraged?
No.
No.
Well, if you wanna be distracted and discouraged, look around at others. We'll start with the first one. We were handling sullen. This was just the prelude to getting back to sullen, a sullen spirit, the type of devil spirit, I handle this stuff in the advanced law. We already handled a spirit of oppression, which is the spiritual cause on the outside for a spirit of depression that affects people on the inside, and these are devil spirits. At the point that that spirit gets involved, the individual is not in control. They're oppressed. I gave the, the example I gave yesterday, I think I gave this yesterday, is oppression is like being in a glass with a glass ceiling. And so, you know, it looks like you can get somewhere, and so you jump up and you smack your head on the ceiling. And you jump up again, and you smack your head on the ceiling. And you jump up again, and you smack your head on the ceiling. And you know what happens to people after they smack their head on the ceiling a few times?
Flathead.
Besides being flatheads, they stop jumping, and that's depression. The definition, if you look up depression, in the definition, and you can, okay, great. And some of the synonyms, melancholy and all these things. At depression, you give up. You stop fighting, you stop jumping, you've given up. See, with oppression, oppression is the spiritual cause where you keep getting blocked. No matter what you try to do, no matter how you try to go, you keep getting blocked, you just keep running into a wall or a, and then the clouds start looking like that, you know, they, they start lowering down where it's more, that dark cloud they talk about, that, it just keeps going lower and lower and lower and lower. And you keep trying to shove up and jump through, but all you have is more dark cloud. And then finally, you stop jumping cause you're depressed. Oppression is the spiritual cause on the outside that produces, that brings depression, which is the spiritual cause on the inside. What do you have for depression? Read it loud, please.
Two-deep spirit saddened, suppressed down, lower. Oh, we don't want that. Well, suppressed down or lower.
Yeah.
That's depress, excuse me, this is depression. The act of depressing, the condition of being depressed, an area that is sunk below its surroundings, a hollow. Metaphorology, a region or reading of low baro, barometric pressure, the angular distance below the horizontal plane through the point of observation. Astronomy, the angular distance of a celestial body below the horizon. Economics, a period of drastic decline in the national economy characterized by decreasing business activity, falling prices, and unemployment. Despondency, melancholy, dejection, the synonym, at despair.
Okay.
But depress has two-deep spirit and sadness, right?
Yeah.
Takes the spirit away, the, the happiness.
Yeah, yeah, right. Uh, is depressed in there?
Mm-hmm, of course. Yes. In low spirits, dejected, botany, flattened downward as if pressed, pressed from above. Zoology, flattened along the dorsal of and ventral surfaces sunk below the surrounding regions. The depressed center of a crater economically and socially below standard, troubled with widespread poverty and unemployment. These synonyms at sad.
Okay, and we're gonna do that, we're gonna go to the one for despair and the one for sad. Whoever gets there, Chuck or Christie or anyone.
Oh, which one are you doing?
I'll do despair.
Okay. Okay. Chuck, synonyms at sad.
Sad is an adjective, sadder, sad, low spirits.
No, no, just the, just the sentence.
Oh, sentence. Sad, melancholy, depressed, blue, dejected, downcast, sorrowful, doable, woe-begone, desolate, miserable. Wretched.
There you go.
Ratchet is not wretched.
No, I didn't, I meant your question.
Okay, class.
These adjectives all mean to be low spirits. Sad is the most general. Melancholy can refer to a lingering state resulting from temperament or a condition marked merely by a somber, by somber thoughts. The first of these sentences is often described in depressed. I'm sorry, described by depressed. Blue, less formally applies to loneliness of spirits. Dejected and downcast suggest, suggest dark moods of rather short duration, often triggered abruptly by something external and marked by disheartenment.
Ooh, by something external, see? Marked by disheartenment. And then you're down and blue, and if you stay there for a while, it's not a good thing. You find yourself down and blue, and you shouldn't be down and blue. First of all, we should never really be down and blue. But if you're down and blue, you're just playing with your tractor. Can't stay there. See, it's in vogue for people to be down, in a down mood, you know? Cause they're deep thinkers, you know, you see, the images again, you know? Nothing wrong with thinking and being intense about thinking, that's not what I'm talking about. But where the, brooding, you know, brooding. So-and-so broods, and so this, uh, the rock stars. When have you seen a rock star group on a page of a magazine where they're going, it's great making ten million dollars a concert, it's cool driving the coolest cars, having all the babes we want, blah, blah, blah. No, they're like this, this one's mad, that one's mad. What about models? The top fashion models are all angry-looking. The top fashion, now, on Penny's, to the Penny's catalog, they're happy. They're starting to get sad, though. I asked, I asked some models, I said, how come you guys, the top fashion models, are so angry-looking and moody and blue and glum-looking? And the models on the J.C. Penney catalogs, they're so happy? And they said, cause they get paid more, really. They have more work and they make more money, so that's why they're so happy. That's not true. That's not why. But, uh, it was just interesting. I, I've shared with you the story before about the waitress, who got offended, cause I kept saying, white trash. That's a joke. It's, it's not my joke, how come they're not, it's your joke.
Set it up.
I gotta set it up.
It's set.
Okay.
That's only white people can say stuff like that.
Oh, no, it wasn't white, sorry.
Anyway. Anyway. And we were both working, and I was making tips, like they were going out of style, and this waitress was just ticked off, and she was not making good tips, and so I said, what is wrong with you? I mean, you're like slamming the plate down on people's tables, you're, you're walking, you got a skull on your face, I mean, what is going on with you? She goes, she goes, I'm angry because I'm not making any tips. But what was the truth?
She wouldn't make any tips, cause she was angry.
Exactly. Exactly. But it gets flipped around in people's minds, so many things are like that for people. They think it's because of this, the external cause, cause that's what the devil wants you to think. That there's some external cause bigger than God that should depress you. Okay, who has synonyms at despair? Read these, just the synonyms.
Okay.
Should say despair, da, 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 yes, go ahead, Christie.
Despair, despair, despairing, despair.
Synonyms?
Oh, I see here, excuse me.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, despair, hopelessness, this, uh, desperation, despondency, depression, discouragement, dejection.
Wait, desperation or desperation?
Desperation.
Like desperate, desperation.
Yeah, desperation, yeah. Okay, go ahead and read them.
Then we go to the nouns?
Where in the world are you? Somebody get that dictionary. No, I said synonyms. Okay, go ahead, all right, go ahead. Read it.
These nouns denote emotional states marked by lowness of spirits or loss of hope. Despair and hopelessness, stress and utter absence of hope, and often imply a sense of powerlessness or resignation. Desperation implies absence of ground for hope, but adds the idea of Desperation implies absence of ground for hope but adds the idea of fighting back, often blindly or recklessly. Despondency and desperation emphasize lowness of spirits. Despondency is usually stronger in suggesting cessation of hope, courage or effort to recoup. Discouragement suggests loss of confidence or courage in the face of obstacles. But is generally the weakest of these, these terms. Dejection is lowest of spirits, often of short duration and generally traceable to an external cause.
Okay. Now, that one, despondency. The, what was it? Des- desperation and despondency. That doesn't sound right. Despair and despondency. Chuck, check that. I just read that. What, what's with it? What and despondency?
On the synonym goes despair, hopelessness.
No, no, no. Go down to where it has the definition of.
Despair and hopelessness. Oh. Despondency is usually.
No, what's, what's the whole sentence?
Oh, here we go. Despondency and depression.
There we go.
Emphasizing lowness of spirits.
See, despondency and depression, keep going and then it says, despondency is what?
Des- despondency is usually stronger in suggesting cessation of hope, courage or effort to recoup.
Or effort to recoup. See, there's no more fight. That's, that's depression and despondency. There is no, the fight is gone. You just, well, whatever.
Give up.
You give up. Oppression, spirit wise, makes it seem like you just, there's no way out. You keep trying, you get nowhere. And so finally, it sets you up for the next spirit, which is depression. And then you just go. You give up. I keep trying, I keep trying, I keep trying. See? You understand? And you give up. Then sullen, sullen, okay? Chuck, you can give, um.
Sullen, showing a brooding ill humor or resentment. Morose, sulky, gloomy or somber in tone, color or portent?
Portent.
Portent. Sluggish, slow, a sullen march. Let me read this etymology.
Read those again. Take your time too. Those are just so awesome. And think about yourself. You have to be thinking about others. That's my job.
Showing a brooding ill humor or resentment.
Okay.
Morose.
Morose. That just doesn't sound good, does it? What? What else?
Sulky.
Sulky.
Yeah, it's a theme, so.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Gloomy.
Gloomy. The adversary pushes that, right? Gloom and darkness? Go ahead.
Somber in tone, color or portent.
Go ahead.
Sluggish.
Uh-huh.
Slow.
Okay. Sluggish, slow. What happens to people that are sluggish and slow? They're, and slawful. They end up being late devil spirits. See, what I've dealt, what I, what unfortunately I didn't under- I just didn't catch some of these in situations I was dealing with. So if someone's late or they're slow, you say, hey, would you, you know, someone you responded before, hey, would you come here? Devil spirit. Sullen spirit. It's wild. So I just get pissed off. I'm like, get off your ass and get over here. What the hell is wrong with you? But the person had no control. Now at some point, here's where believers miss it. You're teaching and you say something very simple and they choose not to obey. Simple things like be on time for fellowship. Cause why, why, what difference does it make if I'm on time or late? Little things. That's why I always watch as a leader at a fellowship, I always watch people, because I know something's wrong. Now I know more. But I, I've always known something's wrong if people start habitually being late. Okay, what was another one of the words? Sullen, oh, sullen spirit, insociable. Uh, who wants to look that up? Let's see. Insociable. In this case, you have to look up sociable because insociable is not in there. It's just the opposite of sociable. Someone else look up, uh, Christie, look up introvert or introverted, introvert, introverted. Did you have anything else on sullen, everyone in your dictionary?
Showing irritation or ill humor by a gloomy silence or reserve persistently and silently.
Gloomy silence. That's why I ask, I push you guys to share. Gloomy silence. I don't have anything to share. Snap out of it. Have something to share. What is that? Or you got nothing to share? What do you mean you got nothing to share?
Ill humor, morose.
Okay.
Indicative of gloomy ill humor.
Okay, got it. What else you got over there? Who's got, uh, either sour pussies or insociable? Oh, sour pussies. You can look up sour pussies, everyone, that's me. Um, you're looking up sociable, right, Sophia? Okay. Well, insociable's not. Did you find introvert or introverted? Okay, go ahead, Christie.
Introvert, uh, introverted, introverting, introvert to turn or direct inward. To concentrate one's interest upon oneself. To turn a tubular organ or part inward upon itself.
Tubular. That's like your intestine. Means you're full of crap.
Um, to exhibit introversion. A person whose thoughts or interests are directed inward. Compare extrovert and anatomic structures such as an, um, intestine that is turned inward upon itself.
I told you. Introverted, it's all in. A per- and this sullen spirit, it's extreme introversion. We talk about wallflower that just, they'll go there and just stay against the wall and won't do anything. That's just, that's great stuff. This is extreme. Someone who's turned into themselves. Well, I ask you if you wanted to be miserable. If you wanna be miserable and now we find out and full of crap, then just look within. Look within. Some devil spirit possessed, oh, moron, Jerko, philosopher said, know thyself. You know, spend all this time focused on yourself. And what happens when people do that? They become miserable. But we've given it a label. It's una uno's immortal sadness. You're just sad because of the condition of the world and the condition of people in the world. What helps you stay there? The news media. Ten people just died in bump. Oh, isn't that so sad? So and so just got robbed. Oh, isn't that so sad? Blah, blah, blah happened. Oh, isn't that so sad? Fuck, then if it's, that, those things don't get you. Fifty children were found mis- Oh, that's so sad. I know what that, I'm a mother. Oh, it's so sad. All to produce this morose, sad, sullen, introverted, insociable, sociable.
Pleasant, uh, is an adjective. Pleasant, friendly or affable.
Pleasant, friendly or affable. Likeable.
Providing occasion for conversation and conviviality?
Conviviality.
Conviviality.
Hey.
Uh, noun, insocial.
Okay, so insociable would be just, you know, all closed in why? Cause it's all about you. That, according to Narcotics Anonymous, it works how and why is in step, uh, three or four, see which one is. Yeah, step four. In the fourth step is important to take a good, hard look at how fear has worked in our lives. Our experience tells us that self-centered fear is at the root of our disease. It's not disease, we know it's devil spirit, but roots. Now, you with me? Tracking? Tracking, tracking, tracking. Plus we got coming up sour puss. Who's got sour puss? Is that one? Ooh, now, now we got some dark fruit. Look at that. That's no good up there. Here, we're looking at a picture of a root and the ground level on the tree and we got, uh, a root is producing some bad fruit. Down here somewhere at the root of alcoholism, drug abuse and other addictions, and there are others, right? Where people just keep doing the same thing, thinking the same thing, going the same way and you go, no, no, they go, but, 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 no, no, but, 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 no. It's being focused on you where it's all about you. It has to be why I gotta have it, what I gotta mean, I need this and I need that. And I, 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 it's all about you. That is, there is, I don't, you know. At the root of drug abuse using alcoholism is self-centeredness. And when you end up self-centered like that, you end up being miserable, down, depressed, sullen, insociable. Somewhere you open up a door for that. It could have started, started somewhere. It started somewhere when it was all about you. Sour puss.
Sour puss. In normal, a person having a grouchy disposition that is often accompanied by a scowling facial expression.
Okay, sour puss. And puss is a, it's, who, look at this other dictionary one, uh, Sophia, look that up. It's neat in this dictionary, yeah. Sour, no, sour puss.
Sour puss, oh.
It puts the two together. It's a neat definition in this one. Uh, puss is face. What?
Sour puss.
I have a person coming where I can read it when she does that.
Yeah? Okay. That's who you are.
I know, I saw it. Two pages were stuck together. Noun, slang, a person with a habitually gloomy or sullen expression or attitude.
Yeah. So there's a spirit that puts people in this category. Somewhere they opened up the door to that. Could have been years ago, could have been days ago, could have been weeks ago. But all these things are like so closely aligned. These are spirits affecting the mind. Making someone sour, you know. Sullen. See how closely aligned it is to being oppressed and depressed? There's a difference between godly sorrow and the sorrow of the world, isn't there? Who knows a verse that deals with that difference? It's in Corinthians. It's in second Corinthians. It's in second Corinthians six or s- ah.
I will find it. That's the one.
Second Corinthians six.
Or seven.
And it's sad. For godly sorrow.
What verse?
Uh, seven ten.
Seven ten.
For godly sorrow worketh repentance to salvation, not to be repented of, but the sorrow of the world worketh death.
How do you like that? The sorrow of the world worketh death and sickness is?
Uh, it's, it's, it's death and parter and hold.
Sickness is death and parter and hold. So being all down and sour and all that, you're gonna have sickness nearby. You're gonna eventually have death at some point. You'll medicate yourself to death or some other thing. It opens up the door later on to what's at the bottom of this page, a suicide spirit. No animal ever commits suicide of itself. No man of himself ever commits suicide. It's a devil spirit. But that's why you see some of these things so closely aligned. Where people go from this to this to this to thi- oppression, depression, sullen, all of these things, these spirits like to hang together. Yes.
Have animals ever killed themselves?
Not without a spirit.
But they have, really, don't they?
Yes. Yeah, sure. But not without a spirit controlling them. Same with people.